Welcome, everyone. The Board is back in open session now. So the first item is public comment. Is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, we move right into the superintendent's report.
All right. And I'm going to start tonight by welcoming everybody that's here. So as we had agreed a while back that every trimester, we would honor and acknowledge our students that have won special awards and areas of acknowledgement. So with that, I think last time, the Board stood in front of the tables and we moved people through a congratulations line. And I'm going to ask Merrill Brownlow and Kristi Mullen to come to the microphone and start introducing our students.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I am going to do my best as I announce the students to pronounce your names. If I mispronounce a name, I apologize in advance. We're going to do our best. We're going to start with at the elementary level, our AAUW poster contest. And tonight, we'd like to congratulate Kalen Novak, who was a contest winner. Are there any other AAUW poster contest winners here this evening that did not RSVP? Okay, we're going to be moving on. Kalen, come this way and get your certificate. We printed a nice colorful certificate for you. There you go. Okay, congratulations, Kalen. We're going to move on to our eighth grade boys' basketball conference champions. And here with us tonight is Cory Baker, Miles Casey, JP Hanley, Eddie Melidis, Owen Murphy, Luke Robertson, and Liam Stack. Okay, thank you. Brady Vaya is here as well. Anybody else from boys' basketball? Brady Vaya? Gustavo Linares and TJ Sloan. Okay, moving on. We've got another conference champion group, our seventh grade girls' basketball. So here with us tonight are Paige Fudage, Veronica Hunt, Lena Lemke, Ava Morella, Aha McKay, Bryce Picorick. Anybody else from girls' basketball? Okay. Now we have back to eighth grade girls' basketball. Lot of basketball champions around here. Gia Diaz, Shannon Malloy, Adriana Stanovich. Anyone else from the eighth grade girls' basketball team here tonight? Okay. Next, we have Word Masters Challenge. And we are honoring for the highest score in round two, Patrick Hart. Most improved on round two, Laura Lee Limeberg. And anyone else from Word Masters Challenge? Okay. Now we have our History B finalist, Hauser student Johnny Kelleher. Our all-school spelling bee at Hauser champion, Caroline Marrero. And lastly, National Geographic Geography B, Nick Satcharsky. Nick, my husband's a geography professor, DePaul. He'll want your resume. Next, the National History B finalist, Donovan Connolly. Another History B Regional Qualifier, Carl Lucas. Another History B Regional Qualifier, Caroline Marrero. Another Regional Qualifier, Ciaran Matthews. Another Regional Qualifier, Liam Matthews. Another Regional Qualifier, Ben Mooney. Joining them is Cole Pleple, another Regional Qualifier. And two more Regional Qualifiers, Nick Satcharsky and Jake Shavitz. There's several that are present. We know our history here. We're excited about that. Next up is our ILMEA Composition Contest, and that's for musical. And in the Orchestra Department, Max Didio, honorable mention. He also got second place in the Arranging Contest for ILMEA. Also, in the Instrumental Music Department, we have Honors Recital Honorable Mention, Brooke Craig. Carl Lucas. And an Honors Recital winner, Cole Pleple. And Nick Satcharsky, also an Honors Recital winner. Next, in the instrumental music arena, we have an Orchestra Ensemble Contest Honorable Mention, Noah Breonis. And an Orchestra Solo Contest Honorable Mention, Ethan DiMano. An Orchestra Solo Contest winner, Noah Breonis. And three piano solo contest winners, Ian DiMano, Brooke Craig, and Ethan DiMano. And another solo night honorable mention in the Band Department is Grayson Picorick. Anybody else for band or orchestra that came that I did not call? Okay. A very exciting championship, first time in District 96 Robotics Conference Champions, Josh Nelson, Cole Pleple, and Grayson Picorick. Next up, we have several West 40 Speech and Drama Festival First Place Ribbons. Here tonight with us are Brooke Craig. Hope you have a big wall. Jay Swayo. Is there anyone else from Speech and Drama Festival here with us that I did not mention? Okay, so on addition -- oh, tell me who you are. Brian Pipel. There you go. Thank you, Brian. In addition to the students that were here with us tonight, there were a total of 118 students recognized this trimester for achievements. So, and quite the array. So we're proud of all of you. Thank you so much. And I'm sure none of you have any homework to do tonight. So just in case, you're welcome to carry yourselves home to take care of that. Or if you'd want to stay for the whole Board meeting, you're more than welcome to do that, too. Thank you, parents, for getting your children here and supporting them. We appreciate it.
How many kids are registered?
Well, three at San Francisco.
So say like 40.
Yeah, I can count them.
Well, was everyone that registered, right? So it was 43.
Thank you. I just.
No, they didn't. Why don't you tell me?
I was just going to wait till you. You didn't want to know.
You know what? I'm all mixed up, Ben. Bang, burr.
Yeah, I'll do it in the back.
Go back here.
Steph, you got to get yours.
Did you? No, I just got it.
Oh, you just got here. Okay.
We have stuff.
710 on the nose.
Sure, your grandfather doesn't want to sit through another four years.
How many were there?
33 was what I thought.
Yeah, probably does. Congratulations. Good job. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, John, for bringing it by.
I wanted a word. Do I get something? Just handshake.
Merrill, do we have any left over?
I can count what we're doing. I know, I know. Let's count.
All right, so we're all back again, then. So Rich has to leave early tonight, so we have changed the schedule a little bit to begin the discussion of the old business discussion of long-range facilities. There's a number of things that we need to talk about, I think. What I'm maybe going to suggest for an order, if people agree, is just to make it more manageable, is to start out by having Ms. Matlock maybe describe what the next step would be if we were to proceed with a project like Ames. She can kind of fill us in on that and what the pricing would be for that. And then, once we have that information, then what I would suggest is maybe we talk about the Ames project as a binary decision. And the question is, do we want to give the committee the go-ahead to sort of start seriously investigating that for 2019, if possible, to make that a binary decision? Because if we don't make that decision now actively, we are making it passively because just because of the amount of time that's going to be required. And then the third topic would be kind of going through the list of the other things we've talked about one more time, maybe school by school. And then finally, we get into the discussion of finance. Now, the finance discussion is related to all the others, but I don't know how to have them simultaneously, so maybe we'll have to cycle through a few times. Does that sound okay to everyone, that sort of that sequence, tentative sequence?
Yes.
Okay. So then, with that said, then maybe Ms. Matlock, you could maybe tell us, you know, what the next steps would be and how much they would cost and so forth for a project like Ames, which I assume would be, they're similar for all the projects that we do.
Sure, sure. Hi, again. So, yes, this is a great, exciting process to embark upon now. It's our visioning process. And it involves meeting with various focus groups, be that teaching, the teaching staff. Let's say if we're talking about Ames, it would be the teaching staff at Ames, the administration, the students, again, and go through a number of exercises, empathy studies, some different activities to build consensus in the form of creating some unity in decisions for design and goals to accomplish throughout the course of renovations and additions at Ames. Because as of now, we know we want to solve some growth problems, but we not necessarily know what else we want to solve there as well. And if we do solve those growth problems, what exactly does that look like? And we would like some input. And we go through a number of activities with this, with this format. It also involves the possibility of touring facilities that may be of a similar mindset to the group, or just to brainstorm and get some, you know, they could be virtual tours or they could be in reality as well. So it's whatever the group has an appetite for and a timeline for, honestly, because all of this takes time. And it is a lengthy process, and it's something that takes, you know, a few months. So it's something to consider that we need to spend a lot of time before we move forward with a design, because this is that vetting out process. And we call this programming as architects. And it's really just kind of getting all of that defined square footage down so that we can come up with then an associated cost for that square footage, okay? And then what that looks like. And then, obviously, if we're adding impervious surface to the building, then we're going to have to do some preliminary stormwater calculations to figure out the costs associated with that, because that can affect a project dramatically. And we just want to make sure that we include that. And so that would be part of the study as well. A lot of meetings, a lot of program notes, and a little bit back and forth, but again, mostly consensus for design. And then bringing three options to the school board at some point in time when we're comfortable with those options, and describing them in detail, the pros and cons, and the costs associated with them.
So just so I understand, the options, are they, what are the options exactly? Are they architectural schematics of some kind?
They are site plans and floor plans, so yes, they are architectural schematic, well, conceptual drawings.
Conceptual drawings, and then in that with a cost associated with them? So you could say we have this option, which would look like this.
Yes.
We have this option that looks like this, and this is how much each would cost.
Correct.
And that's typical, Carrie, that you bring three options.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be three, but I sense that there was a need for multiple options for this solution, so that's why I included three. It could be, you know, I don't want to say more than that at this time. If there's something that, you know, there was another option on the table, we wouldn't hesitate to include it. It just, or if it turns out that there might be only two really good concepts, you know, we would bring those forward. But three, you know, occasionally, more than often, more than not, we have three options for school boards. So that's why I picked that.
Was it just go back and forth between the drawings? Because if you come with like three drawings, are you saying three drawings and then we pick one? Or are you saying, well, we like number two, but you would go back and forth and modify that? I mean, what is, I guess, the typical?
Typically, that modification would be done prior to bringing it to the school board.
Okay.
And what we would give you would be A, B, or C.
Okay.
And you would pick one of those.
Okay.
As you do your research, talking with staff and students. It's also essential to bring the interested members of the community into that.
Absolutely, whatever you would like.
To, it's their money we're talking about spending and their kids, so just make sure that's part of the research.
Carrie, does that usually take places like a town hall, or what have you done with other districts if you want to bring in? I know you could do a whole lot of things.
Very similar to what we did with the community meeting the last time.
Okay.
We met in this room and then broke out to smaller groups to take in information and whatever anyone would like to contribute to the concepts of what we should be thinking about.
Would you meet in that school, then, if it's related to that?
We certainly could, yes. That would make some sense.
Kind of be nice?
Yep, absolutely. Maybe a tour would go along with that.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a couple of questions here. So the base AIA document, which this MOU would actually be an addendum of, refers to several different types of drawings. And what it sounds to me is that what you're putting together falls under the schematic definition in that AIA document. Is that accurate?
It falls under the programming definition in that AIA document. Schematic design is actually the first phase of technical drawings, and those would be, then, so I've left those out. If you look at additional services, it's schematic, design development, and construction documents. Those are all referring to. Basically, the gist of that is that these are not technical drawings and cannot be bid.
Right.
They're conceptual drawings.
Correct.
What are they, three-dimensional, so you can see?
We can do that.
What are you thinking?
I am not anticipating three-dimensional drawings.
Or is it just like a?
They are 2D. They are two-dimensional.
2D, but it shows the rooms and shows the dimensions and so forth.
So we could get a basic idea of the number of classrooms or multi-use space, or who knows?
Exactly.
It's more about general use rather than that exact doorway is going to go.
Right. And we will show, we can show doors and so forth, but that level of detail is not important to concentrate on for this type of study.
Wouldn't you show also like a sketch of what it would look like, you know? Is that like you're looking at the building from the street? It would look like this.
We could do that.
Okay.
That's not what I included in here. Those are additional services for a rendering, three-dimensional rendering. That's fine. We're happy to do that. I just didn't include it in this particular proposal.
So these are overviews and perhaps an elevation?
There is no exterior elevation.
Okay.
There is a site plan and a floor plan of each of those three different options. And the reason for this is that we don't want to get hung up on what that's going to look like. There are too many factors to consider related to that, and too many approval processes that we need to go through. So what we want to do is concentrate on the plan first, and then the next phase, we will absolutely get into that. And that would be those drawings, the schematic that you talk about. That's absolutely.
Would you let us know in those drawings what village approval would be required for? Like, this is, this could be if we get approval for such. Is that something we could?
We'll have a timeline for that?
I mean, whether it's, I know there's water, and I don't know if it has to just do with the neighbors next door, or what, you know, what the parameters are for the village.
Yeah, we'll have that, we'll have to outline that whole process.
Yeah.
So that you're, so that we're well aware.
So we know what the contingencies are.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Absolutely. For a timeline, more so than anything.
Yeah, the process with going to those meetings.
Correct, okay.
Carrie, before we let you go, could you please review the project schedule that you summarized in that MOU?
Yeah, just really quickly, and this is an aggressive schedule, you know, and again, it's based upon participation. I can only be as accurate as I can estimate what it will be, how many availabilities there will be. I mean, if we're not able to meet for a month due to holidays or vacation schedules or whatever, then it's going to have to slide a little bit. And these things happen, and we should understand them, but this is the ideal, in an ideal world, this is what we're working with. And the schedule really, again, would lead up until, I believe, the first meeting in August, and that's when we would do the presentation. But these, these various meetings would take place immediately, and ideally ASAP, because we, before school lets out for the summer, obviously.
Because you have to talk to the people that work here.
Right.
So is it fair to say that this is an efficient time schedule? Not necessarily a rush time schedule, but this is.
Efficient, sure.
This is efficient.
That's fair.
If we were to succeed in sticking to schedule, I mean, how much time do we need? If we were, is it realistic, if we assume the schedule, to assume that we would be ready to go for all the things that need to happen if we're thinking about construction in 2019? Or is that now, is that too ambitious, given this?
Well, again, I think it goes back to your question, Sherri, about the timeline for the village approval. And we got to get a better handle on exactly what that's going to take. And ideally, if we were to come to a decision, you're going to probably talk about it for a couple of board meetings in August, right? Or, and then so likelihood would be September. And we would need, technical drawings would take four months, you know, depending on the scope of the work. And we could, you know, if it's a smaller addition, might take less, depending on how much remodeling we get into. But again, in conjunction with that timeline for approval process, and then deliberating on what it might look like, how quickly each phase, we're going to have to go through and bring a presentation to the committee to determine, and then obviously to the Board to talk about what that's going to look like. And I feel that that might take some time. So I do think it's ambitious to think construction for 2019. Is it possible? Absolutely.
But it's now ambitious, it's sort of ambitious in this scheme.
I just, knowing the timeline of the.
Well, I mean, it's my, what do people think about? I mean, my view is if we get into a major project, we don't want to rush it. I mean, obviously, it's better than we'd like to have it done sooner rather than later, but we also want to make sure we do it right, right? That we're not going to be cutting corners.
I agree with you in providing more time for Carrie to do her documents and get it checked so that we have good bids, that, you know, all the things that go into creating all these details and making it a quality bid set is going to result in better results in the end, because we can incorporate the various things that the committee thinks of and the community wants, and you think, you coalesce all these ideas down into something that's realistic. I think we should focus on realistic and quality design rather than trying to meet an artificial schedule. I agree with everything that was just said, and I just want to add that if we don't start the process now, we're all of a sudden going to push into another, you know, it'll be, it'll be a 2020 project.
No, I think we should.
So we do, we do need to start it.
Rich, that being said, I think we should be starting the process now, but I think with full understanding that there are going to be hiccups along the way with anything, community input, village approvals, making sure it's a good design.
Right. We take our time on that.
Yes.
Okay. So then, that leads to the second question, which is, or do you have other questions for Carrie about the timeline or the process?
Only, I know you have a magic crystal ball, but do you anticipate a lot of variance issues, knowing?
Yes.
You do.
Not a lot. We know that we'll have to go through a variance process.
Right.
We did do that research.
Because I know you've been to see them.
Yep, yep. And so it's confirmed that we will have to go through a variance process. How much of a process depends on the scope of work.
Is there anything magic or anything special about ending, presenting to the Board on August 1st? Like, meaning that is there a date in the next year? We're anticipating that we would like to start construction by this date, therefore we back it up so many months? And that gets us to the point where we're presenting to the Board?
I just went through our process for what it was going to take to get, you know, the quickest we were going to get through this process, the most efficiently we were going to get through this process. And that's where we landed, was August 1st. And so I did not do reverse.
What would that date be, or when would be an ideal time that we would want to start construction then next year?
Well, typically in the spring, you'd want to start foundations, right when the brown thaws, and then work to build foundations while school is going on. It's not necessarily a noisy process, so that's something that school districts do on a regular basis. And then, once school is out, get into the renovation portion of it. Again, this all depends upon the extent of what we're talking about. If it's a smaller addition, this might not be a big deal at all and could be finished up in August. However, if it's larger, it could extend into the school year as well.
Any other questions for Carrie on this particular topic? If not, you're going to stick around for a little while, because we have maybe some other questions? Okay, so thank you. So then, that second topic then is this choice about whether we want to start this process in the sense that we want to ask the committee to sort of go back and start looking carefully at what the options are, what the problems we want to solve are, what, you know, some possible solutions are with Carrie? Is that something we want to start that process? No, I think that's the.
I think as soon as possible is the best. I agree.
No.
You've got the committee working, just, yeah.
Keep them working, right?
That's right.
Rich doesn't have enough meetings. Start the process.
You got some more tonight?
Just start the process. We're talking to the other stuff, stuffs over here, but just for just Ames.
I think we know that Ames is a priority, and that is where our biggest space constraints are, and perhaps our biggest options to do something that covers some of the other bases as well.
And we went to purchase property. I was going to say, they're currently the only space where we can.
You better use it.
Right.
That's correct.
And we also have, I think to me, it's that we have no capacity at Ames. Not to say that it's necessarily overcrowded, but it's no capacity at Ames, no capacity at Central. Two biggest schools have no capacity. So if we have extra enrollment, next year, we are basically, we're going to have larger classes.
She could make multi-use rooms, or use for teacher collaboration, whatever she wants to think about, you know?
Right.
Lots of choices.
It sounds like we have a consensus on the Board then to authorize the committee to go back and investigate this Ames project.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So then, that third topic is the, there's a number of other smaller projects that we have discussed a few times, and I think it's, I don't think we should feel bad that it's difficult to prioritize these, because there are many things that are kind of disparate, and this is a 10-year, a 10-year plan. So the fact that we can't sort of decide, you know, one meeting, how to prioritize things is maybe not surprising, so we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't worry about that. We might have several discussions, but I thought it'd be useful to go through these one more time and then have our discussion of the finances and sort of try to tie a few of these loose ends together. One thing, one way I was thinking we could do this is just go through school by school. So I have a list of the projects. So I have a list of the projects broken down by school. So starting with Ames, we just talked about the addition and we approved that. There are two other items that were in the list for Ames. One was to separate parking and play areas and then to provide off-street parking.
My question though, wouldn't that be part of sort of that whole plan that we're looking at?
Could well be. I mean, I hadn't thought about it in that context.
Because I mean, we're looking at the whole, I mean, I guess when we're doing something so big as like an addition, regardless of smaller, big, I imagine that you would be looking at the whole footprint and deciding what
Oh, we can just do this over here.
Right, I mean.
Just going to build a section and leave everything there.
Leave everything the way it was.
Look at all of that and bring you options.
Right.
It's conceptually different though. I mean, an addition is conceptually different than doing something with the play, with the, with play area. I mean, it's not, that's not guaranteed that, I mean, not obvious.
Right.
I think that is important for us to verbalize right now so the committee knows what the directive is from the full board. Yes, it's logical, but you want to hear that from them?
It's logical and I think look at it and that perhaps is, when Kiri does the plans, that's considered as, we can either do this outside thing or we don't. But we should have that option to do it. So it's not a different, it's not a fourth alternative, but it's, we can either include it or not. Yes.
I was going to say, I was hoping we would look at the whole picture as we're doing this, so.
She's got their creative ideas and then we do so she can
I just want to make a, actually a question about the administration, about the separate parking and play areas. We lumped that category into the, into the safety umbrella in the last discussion. And I just, I toured all the schools this last week and I saw the recess. And I just wanted to ask the superintendent, you know, just maybe to describe what some of the precautions that are taken during, when the children are playing, you know, on the blacktop during recess. And if you think those are adequate or do we have any safety concerns or not in that, you know, in that context?
Sure. So as we've talked about, we have parking lot areas where staff cars are parked and those are also our play areas at lunchtime. What we do have, I just want to be clear about this, very strict protocols around, staff members do not take their cars out of parking lots during the lunchtime. If there was an emergency, there would be a process for bringing kids right up next to the building so that a car could exit, for example. So there's not an inherent safety problem because we have, again, very kind of strict protocols, guidelines. Staff members have a clear understanding if they park there in the morning, they're not taking their car out till the afternoon. As I said, if you work at really any of the elementary schools and you want to go out for lunch, you would know to street park that day, you know. So I think that's, I think there's a way to enhance play. And that's maybe, you know, maybe that's the better descriptor for how, what we're really wanting to do is, you know, separate cars from play areas if we can figure out how to do that. But there's not a current safety risk because of the rules and guidelines that we put in place for our staff.
Thank you. So that's, so it sounds like we had the Ames, we know we're doing that. Blythe, there's only one project that was on the list, as far as I can tell, which was to relocate the vestibule doors, which is, I guess, a simple, relatively cheap project, it looks like. So what people feel about that, is that something that do we want to put on the high priority list or?
Well, see, I'm, I'm actually been like sort of thinking about this, this whole sort of like what we're doing with Ames. I'm just trying to wonder if maybe we should maybe look at this school by school and say, I mean, what should we be doing, sort of, what do we have to do sort of maintenance? Like I said before, what do we have to do maintenance wise? But just sort of looking at possibly bringing these schools, I mean, these schools have been, some of these schools have been around over 100 years. I, I think we need to sort of start planning what the school's going to be like for the next 100 years. And I don't, I'm concerned that if we look at like the vestibule doors or like just focus on like a boiler or creating different classroom space or trying to reconfigure things, I'm thinking we might want to think like sort of just bigger so that, so that we don't, so that like we can plan these schools so these schools can carry us well into the future for future boards. Because I, I'm concerned that we're just going to be sort of worrying about like little things here and there and not looking at the sort of the bigger, the whole big problem. And it would be interesting to know what people think about that.
I hear what you're saying and I kind of agree to some degree with what you're saying. At the same time, this is, this is kind of the list that the committee came back to us of their sort of first pass and sort of, I think, trying to do that to some degree. Now, obviously, maybe there's other ideas out there that we could consider. But since this is kind of what we have in front of us right now, you know, short of having other specific ideas, I don't know.
So can I maybe ask Kiri this question? Like, I, I completely agree with what you're saying, but now that, I guess my assumption, and it could be wrong, I could be wrong, is that we partner with our architect who knows our buildings, our schools very well moving forward. And all of these things are going to be always thought of, right? Like, so as, as we're looking at the maintenance items, like, I would assume we'd be looking big picture all the time? You know, like, I don't, I don't know at Blythe right now if there's anything like big picture that we need to really, like, I don't even know where I would start there. Because I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I'm placing some, I don't know, some part of the relationship between the architect and the administration and the school board that all of those things are going to be proceeding moving forward. Like, we are going to be, I hope as problems arise or things aren't working, that we're always looking bigger picture and
I think that the issue there was security and that was one way of solving it, right? So there's a number of ways of doing that. And if security is a priority, then we should look at that and study it further. You're absolutely right that as we look at the building and make changes to it, we would certainly make you aware of, these would relate to that and there would be a cost savings associated with that. We should take a look at that. If you are, wanted to correct the security at all the buildings, we should study security at all the buildings. The, the part that I feel is a hindrance with just looking at Ames, although it's a great start, they are integral, that solution is integral with all the other buildings and it's something to consider. So, well, again, good start, not knocking that.
What solution is integral?
I think the growth solution is integral, based upon what I know about your district so far. So if you're expanding there, you still need flexibility at all the other buildings, so how does that relate? It may not be a building choice. It could be a student choice where you're moving more students to Ames, right? But it is, does have to be considered.
Right, there's, there's several things that have to happen simultaneously. But I mean, what are you suggesting that we have, we not focus on Ames specifically, but?
I think to David's point that the district should be focused on in its entirety as well. So looking at not only Ames, but all of the buildings is what I had suggested originally.
Right, that's
True, but we can only take on so much financially and administratively in terms of your workload at a time. So looking at this over a 10-year plan, we're not forgetting about the other four schools in the district. But here's one that we know is on the radar screen of the committee, the board, the community because we have this piece of property. It's going to be an empty lot very soon. And we do know that adding capacity at Ames will help in other ways throughout the district. So I think your point's good, but I don't know that we need to hit everything hard at once.
And that's fine. I just, I'm commenting.
So, but there is a big picture. I think at Blythe, there is a big picture item, which is we know we're one, one room short of a two-section school. And that's something that we definitely should be thinking about, I think. But whether we want to be, whether this is on the shortlist or not, I don't know.
Yeah, and I guess the thing is the fact that you're doing a 10-year plan. I guess what I'm trying to, I guess this is my concern, is that we like make certain improvements at schools and then like we make improvements at Central. And then all, then like three years down the road, we're going to be doing this massive like redesign and we just spent like $5 million or what have you, or $2 million to get Central the way we want it, that we're going to be essentially throwing it away.
Why would you anticipate that happening?
That's certainly possible. I think you're right.
It's possible. I don't think it's likely.
I just threw that as an example, not saying
I don't think it's likely. I don't know. I think, I think
It's just because I've gone through all the schools and all schools have their own, all their own pain points. And I think these schools have served this, this community very well for a number of years. And I'm just wanting to think that maybe if we focused on, like, and I guess my goal is that we can set these schools up now because we're, I think, at a very exciting point that we can bring these schools to like sort of that, to carry us forward. Because right now, we're struggling and the schools have lasted, I mean, decades. I mean, these schools are very old. I'm not saying let's get the schools to last us another several decades.
And what do you mean by that? Because, I don't know, I think there's a certain percentage of the community, maybe I'm wrong, that appreciates the way the buildings have been used, not, not every piece, obviously, but some of the historical nature of the buildings. And I think that would be a serious talk about, what, I don't know what you mean by take us forward, I guess.
And I guess what I, let me just put it like sort of, do something very basic. I mean, when we were in school, libraries were much bigger than they are today. I mean, there's books everywhere. Everything's on tech, I mean, everything's, we're going, moving towards technology. 50 years ago, that wasn't the case. I mean, we look, and this is something that's just because I know, I can talk to this very easily, is like, just look at the data closets here. They're not, I mean, they're subpar. But, and I can assure you, 10 years from now, five years from now, they're even be worse, just because of how technology moves.
Isn't it going to get smaller and smaller? I'm just joking.
It's all going to be on an iPhone. So that's what I'm just sort of talking about, is like just trying to get
I don't, I don't think, yeah, that's forgotten.
My question though is, is this, I think what I could maybe interpret what you're saying and see if this is correct, is that we have to be continually thinking about the long term and the short term and the big picture and the small picture. And it has to be a continual process, basically. But my question is now, is we have sort of like, we've had a look, initial look with the committee and Kiri at the big picture and now we kind of have to dive in a little bit and look at the little picture and make some specific decisions based on what we, what they, you know, analyze so far.
Because of the high priority, because they were listed as high. I would say, yeah, I totally agree that we need to get those, if they need space, we'll figure it out. But we have some other giant issues.
We have to dive in at some point and I don't think we can be paralyzed by the big, big, big picture. We have to start solving problems at some point. I think that's where it is.
Maybe we can just go through the list and sort of take one more crack at prioritization, given what we know now and certainly not forgetting about, you know, what the issues you raised, I agree, are important. Does everyone agree with that?
I thought we did that already.
I feel like we've done this, but I feel like, I feel like the conversation that needs to be had before that is the financial one. Because I could tell you right now that they're all very high priority and I don't know how to prioritize until I know how much money people are willing to spend. That's where I feel.
All right. I don't think they're all high priority, but I guess
Oh, no, okay.
But I guess to Linda's point though, I would agree.
I think my prioritization would change. If, if we all come back and say, let's spend all the money, then it's different than, than somebody saying, I'm uncomfortable spending any more than $5 million. Like, I think it's a totally different conversation.
Why don't we switch gears then and talk about the finances? So
Only if you guys, if you agree. We don't have to do it like that.
I don't think there's a natural order here. I think both are interrelated. So I don't think they're one preceding the other necessarily. So we had a presentation, maybe we can start talking about straightforward thing. We had a presentation from PMA a couple of weeks ago where the person outlined various possibilities for taking debt of different maturities and different structures. What do people think about taking debt on? Is that something we want to consider at this point in time, I think is necessary, given our healthy fund balance and given the sort of initial scope of the projects?
I do not want to take debt on.
Okay, any other, what are the other people?
Well, certainly not the giant number she presented.
To second, actually, Rich and Sherry, I'm very disappointed about how PMA presented with a very high end
Yeah.
and appearing to encourage us to take on the absolute maximum and end up being house-rich and furniture-poor. I, that I don't think the community has an appetite for. I certainly do not. And I don't think taking on more debt in this political environment with regards to our state support and the potential of property tax caps and everything else, that I don't think we should be putting ourselves too much at risk. And too much at risk means debt.
Right. So that's two no's.
So if we're not taking out any debt, how are we paying for this?
Well, why don't we just go get people's initial impression on debt and then we can get to that question? What do other people have opinions on the, on the debt question?
I'm, I'm okay with that, but not okay when we're at 101%. Okay. I mean, I think what we need to do, and that's why sort of why I'm talking about the money and I'm sort of also looking at sort of the big picture, like, trying to look at like all the schools, is that what are we going to spend each year? And so if we're, if Ames comes back and it's $3 million, I'd say no. I mean, just based on what our balance is. But if Ames comes back and then everything else comes back and it's $10 million, brings our fund balance down to like 60%, I mean, I don't, I haven't done any analysis. So I'm just throwing numbers out as an example. But if it brings it down to six balance, I think we would have to come to an agreement, what are we comfortable with as a reserve?
Well, we have a policy that talks about our percent we need to maintain.
But what are we comfortable with?
I know, that's
Well, yeah, the policy is well below what current balance is.
A dangerous place with pension concerns.
No, I, but I, I don't mean to get off on, I understand this sort of state's issue with the finances and we've got these pension concerns. And I'm well aware of the, I mean, I'm very attuned to those pensions concerns. But I, I think the thing with those, with a lot of these concerns is we are, if those concerns came to reality, our district would far, far better than most districts. If that, if these concerns came, became a reality, that would decimate certain districts. It would basically throw, in my opinion, education in Illinois completely up in the air. Because some of these schools, a lot of these schools could not handle that. And so I can't see the political appetite. I can't see Springfield doing that to these schools.
The question of debt, it sounds like you will be there for your fund balance. You are not in favor of pursuing debt at the moment?
It depends how much we want, how much we need. I mean, I think that's what it boils down to, is how much do we need?
Sure.
All right. I'm in the middle. I would love to know what they're planning for those responsibilities we might take on. And I know we don't know the answer yet. So I'm not real fond of taking down our fund balance too low because it seems to me to be much of a risk. I don't like being at 101% and taking on great debt either. So I think it, for me, it depends on that number when these plans come back and what we want to see.
With our fund balance where it is right now, moving forward with, if we're starting with Ames, I don't think we need to take on debt right now, but I think moving forward, I do think our facilities need improvement. And if that means taking on a little debt to get that, our facilities to where they need to be, I would be comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with taking out $27 million, you know. But I think moving forward, I, I, I think we need to somehow balance what it's, what it's going to actually cost, but also the need of what we have to do. Because I, I think our facilities are subpar in places and I do think we need improvement. So that's how I feel. So I'm not completely opposed. I don't think we need to do it at the moment.
Right. That's kind of the, one of the questions, I guess.
My opinion, I think I'm kind of similar to what's been said recently. I guess it depends on what our appetite is, how much we end up, what is the total project spend? If we're, if we're just talking about an Ames addition and we're just talking about, you know, $5 million or less, that maybe debt is not a worthwhile option. If we're starting to investigate other things, other plans, I think we should stay far away from the high end of the total cost that was presented to us. But I would be comfortable with taking on some debt in order to bring the schools up to where they need to be to get some of these improvements as they're needed.
I'd like to note that we're, based on the presentation from PMA, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that bond issue is going to be finished in a few years.
2022.
And so there is, there's an option for future debt as we pay down our current balance. So this, we are not foreclosing on debt right now, but let's pay off what we owe first.
I agree. Well, I mean, conceptually, I guess I might have a real question about why, what, how does debt in our, in our district with our reserves and with the fact that we don't have a debt service levy, how does it help us? How does, how does taking out debt help us? And that's the thing, since we have to pay the debt back out of our operating funds, we've got no special ability to levy money for debt service. I simply don't see how it's of any use whatsoever, given our, our current reserves. Let's say we take, let's say we spend $10 million hypothetically, draw down our, our fund balance. If we take out debt, we got, we got to pay, we got to pay back the debt, you know, out of the same operating funds that we have anyway. So there's no, there's no advantage as far as I can tell in taking out debt. It's like right now, we in taking out debt. It's like right now, we carry debt, we pay an interest rate, we get 50 basis points in interest from providers or township on the money that we have with them, we pay more than 3%. We're paying a million and a half dollars in interest for absolutely nothing. It's like a negative arbitrage. So I don't even see conceptually why we would take out debt at this point in time, unless we, our fund balance was drawn down to such a point where.
But I think, I think it would be a situation of like, where do we want to keep our fund balance? So like, like I understand what you're saying, but I don't at the same time.
There's a, there's a question about the fund balance as well. How do you calculate the fund balance? Is it fund balance, is it net of debt, which is the only one that sort of makes sense to me? Or is it, or is it how much money you have in the bank?
No, which should be what we don't owe.
Right. So that's my, that's, that's how I would interpret that. I'm not sure that's how the policy interprets it. The policy might be saying, if you've got this much money in the bank, you're good regardless of how much debt you have, which I think is.
Then we might have to reconsider how that policy is written.
Right. So, but if.
Speak towards net.
I mean, but trying to have a financial conversation with somebody who's like.
So, so.
Like I'm not going to use the right word.
Just think about the context of the debt that we took in 2011.
I understand that. No, no, no. I completely understand what you're saying. But I'm talking on like just my own level of what, why we would take debt. We would take debt to get money to complete projects because we wouldn't want to deplete our fund in case of, you know.
Property tax.
Yeah, in case of emergency. So it's one of the reasons, I would take debt, just like, I take debt on my house because I can't pay for it, but I want to live there and still, and still be able to pay for life. So like.
That would, that would require us drawing down the fund balance severely, which, you know, because we've got $30 million fund balance right now.
Right.
Net of debt. And so if we, if we take half of that, 50% as a, as a reasonable target, which is a little bit higher than policy, that gives us $15 million.
Okay.
So that, I mean, I'm not saying we should spend all that, but I'm saying.
But with expenditures exceeding intake, not to the future, that's a problem.
We have to keep the operating expenses. It's probably, what's probably to take out debt or not, was just.
Absolutely.
Right, 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 right. But that's what I'm saying is that, I think that's, so I think you take out debt when you're like, these things have to happen.
It has to be.
These improvements have to happen and we don't want to use all of our, you know.
If we ever get to that point, it's going to be, it's not going to be pretty, I think. We have to take, if we draw down the fund balance and then take out debt, it's.
I know, I feel like I'm having two different conversations a little bit and I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
No, I, I guess this is sort of where.
And again, I'm like, not at the same level.
No, I, I mean, I think debt, debt, I don't look at debt as necessarily a bad thing. I mean, I, I take out debt. I mean personally, I think most people take out debt, is that you want, you want to have a certain amount of savings because there are going to be years that expenses are going to exceed income. And so you need to have nice savings to weather those rainy days. But then at the same token, you don't need to necessarily take out as much debt as you need to. So using like Linda's examples, like you take out, how, you want to buy a house, you take out a mortgage for that, but how much do you put down? Do you put down 5%? Do you put down 40%? How much do you want to leave in your savings? And I think that's what we need to come to understanding is like, do we want to, 111% is high. Do we want, are we okay with 60%? Are we okay with 80%? Are we okay with 22% or whatever the state minimum is? I mean, I'm not okay with 20% for the record, so.
Right. I think that's.
I think our policy is 40, but that's still ridiculous. It's 40, right? But it's still ridiculous.
Forty.
Right, right. But I think this, I think this, I think, I thought I read somewhere there was like state was like.
State may have different.
Our policy says something.
I know, I, our policy says 40, we're running 111. I'm just, these are just examples, I'm sorry, maybe.
Well, 40 is the, don't, don't you go lower than that number. Okay.
So let me just, just, I guess.
And, you know, one last point, I guess, is in the current interest rate environment, interest rates are low, they've been lower, but they're definitely, it seems to be, the trend is on the rise in at least the near term. And I think there were certain incentives toward, in the way the current budget law is written on to how much we can spend or to what ratio we should spend to. I'm definitely in agreement with what Dave was saying about the proportion of where do we want to take our balance down to? What proportion are we comfortable to before we start to incur debt? But again, I guess it comes down to where, what that percentage we want to come down to, what we feel comfortable coming down to, versus then at that point, do we issue debt to cover the remainder?
Right.
So have that money set aside for rainy day, for property tax caps, for other expenses.
Let me just try rephrase what I said earlier in a different way. We are more or less at the point now where operating expenses equal our, our revenue.
That's right.
We take on $10 million in debt and say we can pay it back over, over 10 years, that's a million dollars a year plus interest that we got to pony up, right? Where's that money coming from? We don't have any special ability to levy for the debt. We're one of the few districts in Illinois that don't have a debt service levy. So that million dollars has to come out of our operating funds. So if we want to do that, we can do that, but it's, we don't have a special like kitty to pay that debt back. You see what I'm saying? I mean, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. I think.
In 2011, it was a different situation because they were throwing off $5 million a year in operating surpluses. And so they could take on debt and pay it back and build up the surplus to what it is now. We're in a totally different scenario right now.
No, I agree.
So I just don't see conceptually what we gain by taking debt.
I think I would, I think my, my comment's more on like, well, where are you comfortable bringing the fund balance down to then?
Well, we got, it seems to me like we got, you know, potentially, if we take the policy or something slightly more conservative than the policy at 50%, that would give us $15 million to invest. And I'm not saying that that's the right number, but it seems like an ample margin for, you know, in the ballpark to, for these projects we're talking about now. Certainly Ames in the range, in the range that I think it came back with 2.5 million to 5 million, I think was the sort of estimate range. I mean, I don't know what we're going to get for that. I'd like to understand that better before saying this is, you know, I'd like to know what we're getting before endorsing those numbers. But if that's what it came back with, I think we could easily pay for that out of our fund balance.
Right.
How long would those numbers cross our?
I don't know.
And how much is, no, when our, when our expenditures?
I don't know.
And how much is that per year then, eating into that balance?
Well, that's the problem. That's the problem. So maybe you're running negative, running deficits and then how are we going to pay back debt in that case?
That's right.
We're paying the debt back with debt.
They have to, they have to.
But I, but I think the thing is, we got to go back to the fundamentals, like before we even talk about, like, how much are we willing to spend? But the bigger question is, we have, we have a bit of money.
Yes.
How much are we willing to spend out of that fund balance now? We have to have that discussion.
Yes.
We have to come up, I mean, policy says 40%. What are we comfortable with? Are we comfortable with going down to 40%? Do we want to stay at 60%? Do we want to stay at 80%? What's that, what is our comfort level? And then once we know how much we are willing to go down, we know how much we have to play with, and then anything that we want to do in addition to that, we will have to get debt, or to take on debt.
David, to stick my neck out as I have to do, my limit is probably about 5 million.
Of spending 5 million?
Spending total.
Of our fund balance. That still gives us comfortable. I think your point is taken on the political environment, but I think you're seeing a lot of costs pushed to the supposedly wealthier districts. And so I think we end up being particularly vulnerable on some of these issues in terms of what the state thinks we have a capacity to do. And I'll just, I'll stick with that.
Vulnerable because of our fund balance.
And our property tax base.
But at the high end, 5 million may not be more than just Ames.
We are going to have to make some hard decisions at some point. I'm not saying I couldn't be convinced that 5 million is the wrong number, but.
Or you say this is your initial number. I guess.
That's, that's certainly an initial.
This is the number I'm comfortable with and that's sort of like, is that, well, then that's, let's figure out a way to spend that much, you know. I'd much rather say, I'd much rather say, let's take it project by project, make sure that we're setting on this project as sensible and.
That's without saying that it's sensible, but.
Right.
So that's not taking the fund balance down.
80% of fund balance or, well, actually puts probably about 90% of fund balance.
But, but I guess to Jeff's point though, and I agree with your point, Jeff, in that that's what we need to do, make sure that the projects are sensible and cost efficient. But I guess to avoid this discussion of debt again, I mean, I think we should note, come to an understanding of what are we comfortable getting the fund balance to, so that when we say, okay, we spent 5 million here, we spent 2 million here, we spent a million here, this fund balance is now at 80%. We now know we need to go out, we've like agreed that we go out to debt for debt.
Or we don't do that.
Or we don't do it.
Essentially, if we're running, if we're running flat, if revenues equal expenses, how does debt help us? If we don't have any ability to raise, let, the special money for debt service, unlike any other district in the state pretty much.
Can you tell us if there's any way to change that?
I think that was, Mr. Holmes can address that. The debt service levy and how that works.
Yeah, are we, are we stuck?
I thought that's part of the law when I talked to Mr. Sellers.
Debt or a non-referendum?
Right.
Debt?
Right.
You can actually, I could go to a referendum.
That's a good point.
That would be, you know, of course increase taxes, but that would be the way to get around.
We could go to a referendum to ask for a tax defreeze to get debt.
For the, yes. To get the, well, you can, or for a bond, for a, for a building bond.
Right. That would, and that would make financial sense to us since we get new revenue.
Right, exactly.
Otherwise, if we don't get new revenue, I don't see any, like, conceptually, why would we do that? Because we'd be paying back the debt with, with our reserves. I mean, why not just spend the reserves?
Right. No, I, so leading on that same conversation, I'm much, while I respect what Joel's saying, I would be willing to spend much more. Like, I think 50% of your fund balance is.
15 million.
Taking it to 15, or 50%. I think, I personally don't love that we're, have this money and we're just kind of sitting on it. I mean, it's, should be used for the people who are paying, you know, like, we're all, everybody's paying and they, we need to have our facilities improved.
And sort of go to that point. I mean, I guess the thing is, the way I'm looking at this is, we're not doing this because, oh, we want to put something, we want to do nice, nice things, but it's not because we want to just make a classroom bigger.
Yeah, it's not like extras.
We have to do this. The schools need this. And so that's why, I guess, I'm a little bit more comfortable with this because it's not something that I'm considering is just a nicety or an extra.
Right.
I, I, I tend to agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, the need is a little bit loaded and we could, we can get by with the size, we size the schools we have now, if we're willing to increase class sizes.
Right, but.
It's not, that's, that's, it's not really a need in the sense it's an absolute, but it is.
Well, no, if your goals are to maintain a high achieving district where you're providing top notch education, it is a need.
Okay, but we are doing that right now with the facilities we have. There is no question that we are a high performing district.
Yeah, I agree.
Our teachers are good, our facilities actually are well maintained.
Yeah.
We have long range plans. We are not heading towards a bad place as we are right now. We see.
We're heading towards a capacity constraint though.
Yeah, we are.
Well, we've been at, but we've been at that for a while.
We'll plateau.
We, I guess what, I think it's been described where we found the last, was that your quote last time?
The last, I guess, you're welcome to take it, Dan, so.
And that's why I'm suggesting Ames is a first priority, because that addresses the majority of our space constraints.
Sure, sure. I think that's, that's the first priority on the list. I don't think there's a disagreement there.
Sherry, do you have any thoughts on the numbers, the fund balance numbers?
On a number? I just want to see what the projects cost and then I'll, I'll decide. I'd rather see what we're talking about. I'd like to have money to pay the people that we employ. That would be nice. We maintain a certain level of excellence and I'd like to make sure that we prepare for that. And that we, you know, if we expect class sizes to stay the same, we want to make sure in 10 years that we actually have money to pay what we need to pay. And so I'm, I'm in the middle, I guess.
Do you have any other specific number in mind?
You know, I, I've, my, my number would be probably, probably about taking the fund balance in half. So that'd give us about 55 to 60% reserve.
Yeah, I'd say I'm in between all of you guys. So that makes it so much easier.
More project by project.
Yeah, I think I'm the same way. And Joel, you said five?
Well, clearly, we're not saying take the fund balance in half next week.
Right. Yeah, we're not saying 15.
We're talking like, we don't want to dip below that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But there's also the uncertainty, which is, you know, from what I gather, there's a non-negligible chance that there will be a property tax freeze in Illinois in some form or other in the next, you know, year or two. From what I can tell, talking to various representatives, that, you know, it's not a layup, but it's certainly not zero either. If that happens and we get a four year property tax freeze, that changes our finances dramatically. And so we talk about debt and like, we have no ability to pay it back now. What do we do then? We probably wouldn't do pay our bills at that point, you know. So I think we can be a little bit careful about getting too ambitious, you know, and take these projects in a manageable way.
I'd like to throw off consideration that we also have in Kerry's long range plan is we've got approaching $10 million of O and M. And that's, it's, assuming a 10 year plan, that's a $2 million a year spend.
Because David's already told us we have a, what is it, a scheduled amount of, I don't know, but $600,000 to $800,000 a year for those types of projects. Is that correct?
Rob.
I'm sorry, Rob. I just said David because I was like, looking at the finance person.
You said.
Okay. And that 800,000, that means another 1.2 million that we should theoretically, we could legitimately be spending or using to fix our facilities, based on a plan that we've looked at.
So it sounds like at least we have a certain consensus that, I think there's a universal consensus that something on the order of $5 million is easy to do and that sort of should give us more than enough money to get started, I guess, right? Because that's seen reasonable and then once, you know, get started, we see we need more eventually projects that are pressing.
I think we're, I think there's universal consensus that we're willing to spend $5 million without going out for debt.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
I don't see why the debt, why is this debt discussion not over? Oh, you're talking about referendum debt, like we go out for refer.
No, he's joking. He's saying like, there's consensus amongst us that we're not going to go out for debt last night.
Yeah, I know.
I, I understood what you.
And I don't know if Kerry can help in this.
Maybe, I don't know. So here's, as a board member, this is how I'm feeling. Like, these are a lot of big decisions, like over a span of years. Like, I feel like we're kind of in this situation where we're kind of spinning our wheels a little bit.
We just decided to embark on the Ames project, which is a massive, a massive.
Okay, so I'm, outside of that, you want to go through a list of doing priorities of all these other projects. That's where I feel like we're going to be spinning our wheels. So how, how does this, like, how do we make this move forward?
I think that you're, you're starting good. This is a great, this is a great start in dialogue alone, is, is stopping the.
So is it something where we just keep talking? Like, we just keep, like, I don't think.
Unless you want to delegate someone.
I think take what Kerry develops at Ames and see where that brings us on our larger list.
Right. So, so here, my other point I was going to make was, so like, there are other items on there that sure, like, I think they're all high priority. However, like, what, you know, playgrounds, it seems like something, or, you know, outdoor space, rethinking outdoor space, that seems like something that might be less time consuming possibly and could go in conjunction. Like, things can be in conjunction, correct?
Exactly right. I think with playgrounds, there's a lot of stuff we can do which would be great for the kids and relatively inexpensive. You know, we could put some sod over at Ames once we get that house down. We can give them more games. We could let them place places to run around. It doesn't have to be a multimillion dollar project.
Right, no, no, that's, that's what I'm saying. Like, so like, we know the Hollywood playground is falling apart. Like, we, we don't have to just focus, like, are we able to look at other things?
I don't think we need Kerry for that necessarily, right? For the playground stuff, we can, you know, that's much more.
Well, if we're rethinking, I mean.
You're thinking where, where they might be located.
Yes, like that kind of stuff, I would think.
About the property.
I'm going to throw out an aspect of things and, and we've been talking a lot about specifically about projects and then we started talking about money and then percentages. I guess it would be interesting to me to see, and it sounds like you have some knowledge there, Jeff, of what the recent history of our percent surplus was in, for the last 10 years. Where have we fluctuated from to?
I think, my rough recollection is, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, but there was a, the district was broke in 2003. Literally, they had nothing. They passed.
No reserves at all.
I don't think they had any reserves at all. Does that sound right? I don't think they had any reserves at all. Does that sound right?
Sounds about right.
And then, they had passed a referendum. They allowed them, they allowed the district to raise rates. Under Lambersen, they raised rates very, very rapidly over a number of years. So that by the 2010s, 2011, there was an operating surplus of about $5 million a year that went on for several years, that allowed them to basically do all that big construction project they did back then, the $24 million project, and in addition, build up our reserves to the current balance of about, you know, $30 million net of debt. So that over the last five years, over that, that operating surplus has decreased down to, now we're, you know, still a little bit, a little bit of a surplus, but it's not that much. It depends a lot on things that we don't know, like Ladsy and all that kind of thing, could take it one way or the other. So I would say, roughly speaking, we're in balance right now. And that puts us in a very different position, because we essentially, we're operating flat, so we don't have the ability to sort of service new debt. I mean, really, unless we cut programs, or some cut staff, or do something like that, we could do that.
State is required certain programs that they're not willing to pay for. And that's different than the 2003 and 2010, and we have entered a different situation with standards and with requirements that we're, we have to do. And so we have to think about things in a different way.
In the, in the discussion about referendum debt, I mean, we saw, I think Mr. Holmes showed us the tax rate that is paid, we pay in Riverside compared to the other districts in the Whiskey District, the 15 districts that are in our sort of neighborhood here. And that we're definitely on the high end. So I think it's gonna be, it would be a hard sell at this point to go-
Raise rates.
To the, to the community. So, that takes that, that level of funding off, I think, the table for, for the foreseeable future. At least, that's my impression. You know, unless we get a big spike in enrollment, we'd certainly have to do more. I don't know.
Yeah, we are, of course, to figure it out, yeah.
I think we should move on.
Yeah, I think, I feel like, I would also say the same thing.
Yeah.
I feel like we've exhausted-
Do we want to talk about the other projects or not?
At this moment, I think we can hold off, as Linda suggested.
Everyone agree with that?
Kind that we've got some momentum here, and we can, we'll continue prioritizing-
So that means we are not sort of putting any of these on the short list today, which-
I mean, I would, I would put the outdoor space and playgrounds on the short list if it were me.
Because they can be done.
Yeah, I, I would like to see some, I feel like that is something we are severely lacking, and-
Anything, Jeff, that you would like pulled off?
No, I think that, I'd agree with the playground stuff.
You get to ask the question, it's fun to play back.
We've been talking about that, playgrounds wherever, and I think they're easy to do and, and, you know.
Yeah. I would also, I mean, if, I'll just sit here and keep talking, and I would also think it would be worthwhile looking at the, at Central overall, and just seeing if there's any possible other space that's available, whether that's the district office, because I don't even know if that's feasible or not. So, it would be hard to say, yes, let's do, you know, I think it just is-
Maybe the district office is on the list.
No, I know, I'm saying on that. Those are the two things I would pull off right now, for a short-term consideration. Looking at Central to see if there's any other space we can, you know, pull out of there. And outdoor space, playgrounds, that's where I, those are my priorities.
When we took our tour of Central last week, Mr. Gass mentioned that the attic, that this, would it have space there? And I don't know if that's something, you know, you guys might have talked about it a little bit.
Did you say would or would not?
What's that?
What was your comment about the attic? I couldn't hear if there is a would or-
Lynn and I toured Central last week, was it last week? And Mr. Gass mentioned in passing that he thought there was a few rooms in the attic that would be suitable, not for students, but possibly for faculty, to have like a meeting room or something like that. That was my takeaway. That you're looking for spaces at Central, that could be possibly.
I mean, if we're talking outdoor space, I mean, I'm gonna say that we should probably then, because I know there was talk of like, how we're gonna do this, but if we're looking at, we should look at Hollywood and possibly see what we can do about the parking lot, maybe putting off-street parking. I mean, I don't know what's gonna be involved with negotiating with the village to get off-street parking, but, I mean, that, that playground is falling apart. I mean, it's-
Adding the outdoor, not Central, adding, sorry, I should say, adding the outdoor, looking at outdoor improvements, I think that's reasonable. I think Central is, anything involving renovation is gonna get pricey very quickly, so if there's low-hanging fruit at Central, that's fine, but anything more than that, I would hold off.
Yeah, and I think I was more sort of looking at, like, let's analyze it to see, like, there's a large bank for your buck, though, if you combine or uncombine or separate those launches.
Central housing, yeah.
It's a huge impact on how instruction works.
Right, so, for the playground, I agree with you. If we take that as a separate item and then take something else, like- For the Ames, are they, are that house kind of repped in? I mean, are we sort of in agreement that they should maybe just, just basic seating or sodding or whatever? So the kids can run around there? I mean, it seems like, almost like an obvious thing to do, right?
Yeah, I think we are being-
We agree on that.
We're looking at a MOU on that, probably right for the demolition in April. The rep to demolish it, that part.
We did that, we did that.
Dave and I were there-
You're looking at the bid specs, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry, okay.
Dave and I were there earlier in the week, and Jeff, I don't know if you heard the same, I seem to recall the principal mentioning there was a drainage problem at one end of the lot.
He did, he said that the back of the lot that we purchased is, becomes like a pond during heavy rainstorms.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that would need some kind of drainage.
I would expect that would be dealt with as part of the Ames plan. Right now, it's an existing condition.
Overall plan, yeah, but that would be-
Unless we are causing problems to the neighbors, I don't, I wouldn't be doing much to change it.
I wouldn't expect we would do much to change it, but that would limit how much we could, you know, get away from it.
There's areas that seem too wet.
Right, in the interim.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, they'll figure that out as long as-
Yeah, I heard the same thing. All right, on this topic, is there any other, any other comments? Again, this is an extensive, complicated process, or a decade, I don't think we can hash everything out in one night, Tim.
I think that was good.
I think we made a good start, at least, for the, for the near future.
But it sounds like then we would reconvene the facilities advisory-
Yes.
Soon, you know, and kind of look at our regular meetings, really specific conversations about the Ames project, and work with Sherry around those process steps that you outlined tonight. And then also, the committee would continue to look at these other priorities. So playgrounds specifically, and then it sounds like Central's kind of a question mark.
Central's a question, Ames is a question, because we have construction going on. Blight doesn't need it, so I think it really comes down to Hollywood, I think, at this point in time for playgrounds. Does that seem reasonable? All right, so then, if there's no further-
Good start.
If there's no further discussion about this item, we return to the regular order of business.
We've moved to item two.
It's three.
It's three, it's three.
Oh, yes, this was put under the superintendent's report.
No, it actually goes, it bounces back out to old business discussion for long-range facilities, but then, the other two items that are on the superintendent's report, if you want me to take that as-
The structure's a little bit weird, so, okay, go back to the superintendent's report.
So I just wanted to share for everybody, just, I'll keep you updated on kindergarten enrollment numbers. So we had a really well-organized, very successful kindergarten registration night, and you have the numbers in front of you with Ames at 46 students currently registered, Blight at 15, Central at 37, Hollywood at 22. This is never, we're not done, right? So this is an ongoing process, but I certainly encourage families, and I encouraged our principals just today, to be putting this out in their regular communications to families if they know neighbors and preschoolers in the area to make sure they're coming and registering, because we know capturing this number as closely as we possibly can is very important. We also know that families do move here, you know, families move here over the course of the summer, so some of that even, hopefully we capture most of the families that live here, have a five-year-old ready to come to kindergarten, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor that number.
Marissa, can I-
Sure.
Where would we typically be at this time of year with regards to, do you know?
I, you know what-
If you do not know, that's-
Right, I think last year was something very similar.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I can speak to.
That's enough of an answer.
Yeah.
Although I feel really old, I didn't know anyone in the group was a kid. And that, well, I thought, I was nervous, because I looked around, I said, wow, there's a lot of people here, and this is, wow, the people are moving. But I think I'm just old. I think that's what it is.
Sorry, one question, an anecdote.
But the process was good, it was very efficient.
I see there were, there were a couple people, one at Hollywood, two at Ames, asking to go to Central, and I was wondering, did we have any information why that was, or what was the rationale?
I don't at this point, right. We would look at transfer requests a little further on down the road. But you'll notice there's already 22 students registered at Hollywood. I also just had a, I put the Hauser schedule on here, just as kind of a revisit of the conversation we had at our last meeting, that I think the consensus was that we really don't, again, as Sherry, kind of your point, that capacity to make a later start time for Hauser, what seemed like kind of a simple, just adjust the schedule, is complicated because of the internal schedules and the lunch, et cetera. So, I just wanted to remind people that we are keeping that at hold. It's something we'll hang on to as an idea. I know it's an interest of the board. It's certainly in keeping with, you know, what we study and learn about adolescent sleep behavior, that it would be nice if they could perhaps sleep in a little more and come to school a little later, but that's a, there's a number of challenges in that for us right now. So, thanks for taking a look at that and for bringing that idea forward, and know that we'll continue to monitor that and figure out if there are other facility-based solutions that we can get to over time. And that's it for superintendent's report.
Thanks, Martha. So, next item is the consent agenda. So, at this point, would the board secretary like to read the consent agenda?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the previous meetings, including February 21st, regular business meeting, March 7th, committee of the whole, and March 14th, special meeting. We also have the personnel report as of today's date, the payables pre-list of February 28th, and the payables pre-list of March 21st. And last on the list is the Ladsy classroom lease for 2018 to 2019.
So, are there any items, if anyone would like to take off the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Versati?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is a resolution for honorable, honorable dismissals. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolutions for honorable dismissal of teachers as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Versati?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the Riverside Educational Council. Are there any comments from the Riverside Educational Council? If there are none, then we move on to the board member comments. Does any board member have any, any activities they'd like to talk about witnessing or participating in the last few weeks?
I don't know about everybody else, but I saw an awesome crocodile roaming the halls here recently. As part of Peter Pan show that was playing here the last couple nights. That was an awesome show, and I definitely applaud everyone in the cast. To the teachers, Mr. Mason, Mrs. Conscious, and all the folks working on that did an excellent job. It was great. That was a big crocodile, yes.
I had the opportunity to talk to some of the Hauser team, but I'd like to note that April and Christie should be commended for supporting the, the students last week in a volatile and politically charged time. It's clear that the students were given the opportunity to express themselves in a productive and positive manner, and they were not pressed to participate or not. In short, freedom of expression by the students was supported without the administration defining the agenda, and it was an opportunity for the children, the students, to speak. And I know that we got some community commentary about that, and that's also taken into account, but-
Anyone else have any, any comment to those two comments?
Just want to thank again probably the robotics team. We have the teachers, we just finished up the season, and the teachers were, they put in a lot of extra hours that you wouldn't realize. The competitions, you have to be there at 7:00, you start at 7:00 in the morning on a Saturday. This is not their normal job. And there are a lot of high school volunteers that help, so thank you for them. It's a really, it's a, it's a growth. They build from scratch, and it's a lot of work. And I'm proud of the students for learning to code, and they've never done it before. And it's a really good process to work together, so, yeah.
All right, the next item is the committee reports. First is the Education Committee. Sherry?
Well, similar to what we just talked about, we talked about the Hauser schedule. We talked about kindergarten, but regarding kind of a benchmark adoption, I guess, the ELA team originally had talked about curriculum, but none of the curriculum really addressed kindergarten the way that they did from 1 through 5. So this is, it's called a benchmark adoption, and it's meant to kind of fill the gap where the other curriculum didn't work for kindergartners. So we talked about that. We talked about the handbook, it was an exciting talk. Everyone reads it cover to cover. And also, the March 14th event and supporting safety and all the things that the students wanted to say and didn't want to say. And I'm proud of the principals for handling it in a professional way. So, thank you.
Sherry, next is finance. Rich has had to leave. I don't think there was anything that we haven't discussed already.
It's all on.
I think we just saw it all again.
It was facilities.
And policy, Dan, do you have any policy updates?
Uh, let's see, I think we just received the new issue of press. We'll be looking forward to an interesting discussion on those in the near future. But I don't have anything to discuss tonight, other than we do have a couple policies up for approval on the agenda this evening, a little further down the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Next, we move on to old business again. First is the Blight Park Roof. Before putting this to a motion, is there any, any discussion? I know that the bids came in quite a bit higher than we had anticipated, so I want to know if there are any, any board member comments on that topic before we-
I know that the architect recommended, including all the alternates, but I really would like serious consideration to not putting in the heat tray system at this point. The improvements, the improvements in that trough area and the changing of the roof slopes with the addition of four or five additional drains, I can't remember exactly, I, we should give that an opportunity to work and perform. The heat trays could be added, and yes, I understand it would probably be at a higher cost than is in this current bid, but I think we have opportunities to do the right thing without spending more than we have to. Alternate 3 was the heat tray system.
Any other thoughts on this, on this, on the Blight Park Roof bids?
I guess, I guess my question is, I mean, if we go, I mean, I think we need to make a decision on this, because, I mean, we sent this out to bid, and we didn't get bids back from everyone. So, I mean, it's something that we need to do. If we wait-
I'm saying, accept, accept the bid, just not, not have alternate 3 in what we're gonna do.
Right, right, I understand that. I'm just-
Do you want to do?
Okay. Let's know, I guess, yeah, and that's, yeah, my, my thought, I guess, regarding the alternate, I mean, I don't know what it'd be gained by including, like, removing the alternate 3. I'm okay with, I guess, either way. I just think if it's, if it's an option, it's gonna prevent, it's gonna make the roof last longer, I'd say let's just include it in there.
I guess, in terms of proportion to the total spend, it's, it's relatively small.
Right. I mean, all the alternates are relatively small.
I don't know if you'd be able to provide more information on that, or the reason why we've, I guess, you know, Joel, I definitely respect your opinion on that. I guess I come back to the spend relative to the entire project is very small. I mean, are we-
I'm sorry.
Well, I'll let you, I'm hoping you can elaborate further, I guess, on, on why we should exclude it, or what's, is it just really, are we throwing good money away for nothing?
I, you're right, it is a relatively small portion of the total bid, something, I don't have the calculator in front of me, but we are already, one of the alternates was to do new clerestory windows and change the roof slopes to add the additional drains. And I, that also adds some additional insulation, which should address some of the problems that we've been having with regards to a lack of rough slope and melting issues and ice buildup.
I don't want to speak for Rich, but I, I believe that was his take as well, that alternate 3 might be unnecessary, given all the other changes. Sherry, do you, do you want to maybe talk a little bit about alternate 3?
Sure.
You all, you had the discussion with Rich on that topic, and wasn't-
It really is more of a, kind of a belt and suspender approach.
Yeah, just maybe, just so we can hear on the camera. Thank you.
Sure.
So it really is more of a belt and suspenders approach to what we're talking about here. I agree with what Joel said about the pitch of the roof, the extra roof drains. We do feel that we're solving that there. The unfortunate dynamic that exists in that valley is that there might be, at times, a snow buildup, and this would prevent that. It's on a sensory system that would, would turn on when it's needed. And, yes, it's relatively a smaller cost, but it could be added at any point in time. And unfortunately, the dynamic that And unfortunately, the dynamic that exists there, we just thought we should include it as a just-in-case kind of approach.
And I'm not taking issue with the logic of including it. I think here's an option to be smart with our money. Belt and suspenders is nice when you've got unlimited funds, but it's, it's not absolutely necessary, and if it's truly a problem in the future, it can be added.
I agree with Joel and Rich on that point, or what I think is Rich's position. That was, that was your recollection of what Rich was saying as well?
Yes.
Alternate three. So, yeah, I think I will follow the lead of those.
Did you say it can be added?
Yes, it certainly can.
With a similar, I know obviously costs in the future can be predicted, but with a, is it more complicated to add it after?
The only reason it was a convenient time to add it is that we were removing a piece of the ceiling below to install the roof drains at the same time, and then we could run electrical conduit at the same time. That's why. I don't think that is a huge expense.
People okay with removing alternate three in this case, then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so then is there any other discussion on this item? If not, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the award of the bid of the Blight Park Roof Project to Ellen Smash and Roofing and Sheet Metal with all of the alternates except for alternate three?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Versatti?
Aye.
Mr. Regan, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. Next is the summer school 2008 recommendation. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve 2018 summer school recommendation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about the summer school recommendation? If not, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Versatti?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. Next is the Policy 415 Identity Protection. At this motion, at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve Policy 415 Identity Protection as presented?
Come up.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this policy as currently written?
Actually, I do have a thing about this policy. I guess I sort of wanted to know why we deleted out that Section 5, because it seemed much more broader and offered more protections. Because it's, like I said, it just focused on social security number, I understand, is state law, and so that's sort of the minimum. But down at the bottom on page 3, it shows like what we deleted out, and it seemed to protect, offer a lot more protections. I really...
So the line there, section like blue ink for the board, the superintendent is also responsible for notification of affected individuals and other entity in the event of acquisition of personal information by an unauthorized person or entity, as required by the Illinois Personal Information Protection Act and any other applicable law. So I think, I believe this policy originated around a Social Security Protection Act, so it was very heavily geared towards social security numbers. That, that sort of blue inked item is meant to sort of make it more broadly encompassing.
You're asking about piece number 5, though? What's removed?
Right, what was removed, because it says was deleted down. I mean, I understand that piece, I guess, it just, it was spelled, I guess, I saw that, that piece, but what was deleted out was like an individual's, it was going on like individual's first name, social security number, driver's license number, financial information, health insurance information, et cetera. It's on, what they, they took out what's on page 3. It's the last page showing what's, everything's been deleted out. I was just wondering why...
Sometimes it becomes outdated language. I mean, it really speaks, so press has a team of attorneys that review these policies and make those modifications to language, so I really don't have a better explanation on that one. They did ask that districts also do their own individual attorney review of this one, which we did.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with it being taken out, because like I said, I think, I mean, I know what the laws change and technology changes and what is out there changes, but it just seems like we're just doing the minimum. I like what was deleted out, because it offered, I thought, more and sort of beyond. And so...
You like a stronger policy mission?
Right.
Or is what's left more broad? I guess I just have a question, if we could read what's left a little bit, we could see if it's, sometimes if it's more broad, it'll encompass what's...
Right.
So can we take a look at that?
Yeah, I guess the thing is, what was added was, basically says as required, like any unauthorized person or entity to the extent required by Illinois Personal Information Protection Act or any other...
Right, that's the piece that I'm wondering, does that include what was deleted? If so...
I think what I would do at this point is then ask for another legal review of it, because I'm, I'm uncomfortable when two, really two sets of attorneys have asked us to remove, suggested we remove language. And again, I don't necessarily maybe have the nuance of some of the areas. I don't think it's as simple as adding it back in, because I think there's a pretty, again, the press reviewed this, the press asked for individual district attorney review. I went back with some of the questions, felt that we had kind of, I think, thought the original question was why, why just such an emphasis on social security numbers? So intentionally, there was that section about kind of other applicable, you know, personal identity. In terms of moving back items that an attorney has recommended, deleted, I would want clarity from the attorney on that, as opposed to, I don't know that it's so much board direction. I would want you to be fully informed of why you would or would not, which I could ask, like, attorney could sort of, it's not like a memo for us specifically explaining kind of the rationale, which might be helpful on this one.
So what do people say, they want further analysis of this policy, or...
I'm okay with it the way it is. Every time you talk to an attorney, you end up paying more money, and it seems like it's been reviewed twice.
I feel like if it talks about personal information, I think it should be broader as opposed to listing them all out. I'm fine with it how it is, but, but I'm not opposed to getting legal advice on it either.
Dan?
I'm okay with it in its current, the way it's listed. I definitely appreciate Dave's concerns, and I do agree that the wording as it is, that's being taken out seems to be more inclusive, or, I don't know, that's not the right way of saying it. It lists things out specifically, whereas it's, it's kind of looser, maybe a higher up level, but Martha does, definitely makes a good point there, that two sets of attorneys have reviewed it and recommend this comes out. I'm not, I don't know that going back to them a third time, we may get the result that we're looking for, and that may not be the wisest result.
Joel?
All the comments by the other board members seem good. I don't have a lot to add.
Okay. Why don't we, since there is a little bit of uncertainty, but there seems to be, some people are comfortable with the current arrangement, why don't we, do we make the motion, Margie?
Well, you made the motion, and it was seconded.
Why don't we just have a vote, then, and see where we fall on that?
Okay. Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Versatti?
Nay.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is Policy 7260 Exemption from Physical Education. With the option, okay. So is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve some Policy 7260 Exemption from Physical Education as presented, including the option to define extracurricular program in policy?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this policy?
I know we probably discussed this before, but I just had a question, why are we giving an exemption to 7th and 8th grade and not to the rest of the school? I know we probably had that discussion.
It's the nature of the policy. So then, in my understanding, is the policy originated with high school students, and then it was kind of essentially rolled down in terms of the age that, in which the policy is encompassed. The age group that is encompassed in the policy.
Any further discussion, questions? If not, Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Versatti?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. Next up is the kindergarten, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the kindergarten English Language Arts Benchmark Recommendation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this benchmark curriculum? If not, then Margie, please call the roll. Sorry?
I just say we'll see how it goes, like, it should be okay.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Versatti?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. Last item is, on old business, is the Infinite Vision Acknowledgement. This is the provisor township treasurer wants to buy new software and build the, is it 11 or 13 schools in its area, prorata by enrollment. I don't know, Mr. Holmes, you want to discuss exactly what that is again, so people remember. This is not an action item, but it's just more informational.
The district's business managers decided that the current software is being phased out, it's antiquated, so they voted to go with Infinite Visions. And Infinite Visions, when they said how much it's going to cost, they based it on student enrollment, and so that's how the township treasurer's office decided to allocate the costs as opposed, on enrollment, student enrollment. And of course, in the past, school districts were, received general state aid based on average daily attendance, but now going forward, it is, it will be based on enrollment.
And it's the consensus, it seems, from the law firm, that they more or less can do this. We have no choice to pay, is that...
Right. That seems to be the thought process. We're just acknowledging that. We've seen it.
We acknowledge and we receive their, we've seen their performance.
Thank you for getting the information from the lawyer, it was very helpful.
Any further comments on this issue?
I acknowledge it.
I think in general matter, I think if the provisor township, we could somehow get out of that arrangement.
Absolutely, I agree.
I think that would be great, but I understand that's not so easy to do, so, something to think about for the future. All right, the, thanks, Mr. Holmes. The next item is new business. We have a request for a retiring employee, a letter to request to honor Mrs. Gill. Martha, maybe you could tell us a little bit about that, or...
Sure. So Mr. Columbo is here to share some information, if you want to come up to the microphone, and this is a request that's coming from the District 96 Music Department.
Hi, everybody. So, as you all know, Patty Gill's been here 29 years, and she's our first orchestra teacher in the district, and without her, it probably, might not have survived its initial, its initial stages, and it's kind of grown, and it helped evolve everything that we do here. I know it's certainly helped me in what we do in the band department. So we're trying to think of ways to honor her, and one thing we might, we thought and we wanted to bring this request to the board is, a lot of things in this, in this building are named and dedicated to people, and the one thing she's always done is performed on the stage, and the auditorium's already been named after somebody, I don't know. So we thought it might be nice, we were requesting that maybe we can have this stage named after Patty Gill. That's, that's our request, and we've been trying to find ways to, to honor her, and we thought that might be a nice way to say, you've done some amazing things here, and we'd like to just give back.
And it's not set up as an action item, but it's something, you know, we could move it to an action item at the next month's meeting. Again, I'm still learning, and I think Mr. Columbo has sort of alluded to the same, that we, that we know that there are things that are dedicated to people in our District 96 facilities. I don't think there's a clear process or policy procedure that necessarily guides that. It's, so here comes a unique request, you know, from the music department, and again, it's the, essentially, I suppose, you know, it's the property of the school district, it's the property of the school board to kind of govern, or if not directly, you know, approve, but would want to know that the board supports that.
I think it's a great idea. This is...
Seventh grade, but she's grown so much through Patty's experience, and she's so organized, and she gets, she keeps that motivated, and she's just a treasure, so I think anything that we can do to honor her is wonderful, so.
I think this is exactly how it should happen, where people who love her, value her, and that's where it comes from, that they spend the time to think of an idea that will appropriately honor someone who's added so much to us.
I guess, I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's very nice, I guess I just have to sort of ask a business-type question, though, is like, what is the policy, or like, how do long we keep the names? Because I know a lot of things, some things go on indefinitely sometime, so I was just sort of wondering...
I would think it would be indefinite.
I'm asking because I don't know.
No, I can't, I can't find a guiding document. I think you raise a really good question.
Dave, are you suggesting we should start selling names, right?
Well, it funds the facility projects, so.
No, but I'm saying with the plaque, at least, definitely.
I guess one thing I was going to note, I think it would be awesome to have something from this century that's named after someone. I was looking last night, I think that, I think the auditorium is named, I swear, 1933 was the date, so.
I was going through a list of everything that's been named after it. I think everything was named after people that had already passed away.
Yeah.
Something to...
Someone to enjoy it while they're still around, yes.
No, no, I don't think that's right. I think they were...
I may be wrong, I just, a couple of things.
I think to unseat her. I think that would be a big deal. I think she earns it forever.
I think that for exemplary teachers, we should absolutely...
No, I'm, I'm agreeing, right. I'm not disagreeing, I'm just...
No, no, I know.
It's a really good business, you're so good at that.
Northwestern was Dyke Stadium until someone paid more money.
Right. I mean, we changed, I mean, a hospital changed their name after a while, after several years, so it's, I just want to sort of know, like...
I think it should be indefinite. I just think that should be the policy, something to be named after somebody unless it's torn down or redone.
Joel has uncovered this huge, like, cache of documents at the Historical Society that relate to District 96. And I went in there today to look, Joel's already looked at them, and I went in there to look at them today, and yesterday I noticed that the library at Central was dedicated to, is it, is it Mrs. Holt, is that right? I think that was the name, I could be wrong, but I'd never heard of it before. Very nice plaque, talking about her service for the district over 41 years, and I was in the Historical Society, and I was flipping through the documents they have there, and there actually was like this, this history of the district by the same Mrs. Holt, actually. It was, so, it's sort of making connections, but I think this is a great thing, yeah.
Sounds like she did great work.
You might want to register this with the Historical Society.
And that's actually something, something that...
Is the meeting?
Something that they said is that they have records up until about 2002. After that, the person who's collecting them has stopped. But things like this, we should absolutely give it to the Historical Society so we can continue to track.
So then, because I don't know that this is really something we have to formally vote on, and it's a new business, we wouldn't vote on it tonight, is it through consensus that we can suggest the music department to move forward, or do you want to bring it...
Maybe a formal vote next time, why not?
Okay.
Is there a...
Would it slow the process down?
Oh, I don't know.
Is there any timeline that you all need?
Her last kind of official event here is April 17. I didn't look at the...
Yeah, and our next meeting is April 18.
I was going to say, I don't think, besides just showing that a vote would be like, we're all in support of it, I, you know, I'm sure the expenditure's not at the point where we have to vote.
And I would just sort of say that if we don't, just make sure that it does stay indefinite until the building's torn down or something else.
Whoever's in this room, when this...
Yeah, exactly.
So since we have an informal acknowledgement, why don't we just have a nice little formal one after their ceremony?
Sure. There you go.
It'd be something I could say we are doing...
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Does she know, does she, wait, does she know about this?
She knows, we've got a whole evening, but she has no idea.
Okay. I was just going to say, Joel, she watches every meeting.
Stop watching.
So you're, so you're talking spring, that's the spring concert night, correct?
April 17.
Yes, so I will be there, that'll be fun. Great.
So Bob shouldn't write an article about this tomorrow. Because I know that's the top news.
So the next item is, is the Board of Education goal setting. So last time we talked about an IASB evaluation, self-evaluation, and sort of people thought we didn't really have enough time, you know, people were busy and all that, so, but there's another thing we did last fall, which was a goal-setting retreat. We did that in the, actually it was last summer in August. I think people thought that was productive, but it was a little bit late in the year. It would have been better if it was, we thought consensus would be better if it was earlier. And so we're wondering if we could maybe set a time for that kind of retreat in May or early June before people leave for their vacations, so, I don't know what people...
I'm the only one...
You don't have summer somewhere?
I don't get to summer. That's okay.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, I'm all for it.
I mean, earlier makes sense.
For goal-setting?
If we're going to act on goals, then they should be set earlier.
Great idea for me personally. I think the month of May is quite problematic.
Okay.
Anything...
Is June better?
June is probably better. The further we get into June is probably better. And, but that also gets us into vacation season.
Okay.
I have no vacations in June, so I'm good.
I'm okay with June.
Okay. I might, I might or might not be okay with June, but go ahead. Yeah, let's...
See, he travels places.
Okay.
See, he's vacationing.
Right, right now, May, May and June are good. Later in June, might be a little difficult, though.
After the first week of June is preferable.
After the first week? So maybe the second week of June?
Yes, for me.
Yeah, like right after.
Yeah, after the first week is better.
So I guess maybe you can try to find some data, which everyone...
Yeah. Because that's easy.
Good.
I know.
Next item is, the last item is the final phase of network switch replacement at Hauser, Blight, and Hollywood. Mr. Tafano fills in on that.
Good evening. If this document looks familiar. This is seen a version of it last, this will be the third meeting in a row. The, the first two times, it was with regards to Phase One at Central in Ames. And so through the E-Rate process of, an RFP process, that's been completed. And a vendor has been identified as, as the lowest bidder. And so what, what this is essentially saying is that we're going to, you know, proceed. We still are going to be meeting as a tech steering committee in, in April, prior to the, hopefully, prior to the, the next board meeting. This would really just be really getting all of our ducks in a row. We would not, it's, it is a project that is slated for fiscal year 19. We haven't received our, our funding yet, or, you know, the funding approval yet from E-Rate. But those are also some items that we're going to talk about in tech steering, as to, you know, maybe we, maybe we speed it up, do it a little bit ahead of schedule, get it done over the summer. So when we come forward, either in April or potentially May, we'll, should have a recommendation with, with more details on, on the timing and perhaps what fiscal year it occurs in.
Any questions on this topic, or...
So at this point, is there any public comment?
If there's no public comment, then future meeting dates are April 4, a special meeting at 7:00 PM in Ames. April 18, a regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at Hauser. May 2, committee of the whole meeting, 7:00 PM at Blight. May 16, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at, at Hauser again. So if there's no further business, then the meeting's adjourned.